Hey, IT. Is this somebody, did somebody leave their computer here? I just want to make sure folks know that there's a computer here. That's not mine. That's all logged in and stuff.
So that is actually going to be for the mayor for common council.
Awesome. Perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
I'm on now. Can you, yes, okay. Uh, we are past 4:30, so I'm going to start the common council executive committee of September 5th and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Vitterver?
Here.
Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Govinder Rajan? Alder Conklin?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Bennett? You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. All right, moving along in our agenda. We did not meet for, on August 1st, uh, so I would entertain a motion to approve minutes from our last meeting, which was July 25th, 2023. Moved by Alder Conklin, seconded by Vice President Figueroa Cole. Unless I, wait, is that one of those? I'm rusty. Uh, unless I see or hear, otherwise I will assume unanimous consent and move us into public comment. I don't believe there's any registered speakers. Um, disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures, disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Do we have any? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move us into Agenda Item 2, Legislative File 79100, amending Section 2.7 of the Madison General Ordinances to clarify common council's actions upon submission of a solitary report. Believe I'm turning that to you, Attorney House.
Sure, this was, um, I don't know if any of the sponsors are attending remotely, but this was a request for us to draft an amendment to 2.27. Um, as some others may recall, this ordinance was just amended a year or two ago with the goal of trying to reduce confusion about what it meant to accept or adopt a report that had been requested by the city council of some either agency or board or commissioner committee. At that time, the council decided to do away with the difference between adopt and accept and also required that, uh, well, essentially indicated that adopting or accepting simply meant that the council was noting that the report was completed, acknowledging it, thanking the body that drafted it, and any action that was taken that was recommended by the report would have to be specifically approved either in the adopting or accepting resolution or as part of separate, a separate ordinance or resolution. And, um, Alder Herring to McKinney asked us to, and Alder Slack also was interested in getting back to, um, having a distinction between accept and adopt. And I believe their concern was that most people think of adopt as we are, the council is approving a recommendation and putting it in place and directing staff to put it in place. And that was the previous definition. I, I kind of explained what the history was and what the goal was of the council. I think frankly, one challenge we've had is that adopt is still in Legistar as something that can be selected by BCC staff as an action of the body. And my understanding is that we cannot remove that from Legistar because it's been used historically. So it's still in Legistar. If we just did not have the option to adopt and everything was accept, this might not be as big of an issue, but since it is an option, the, the sponsors wanted to go back to, um, essentially the, the previous interpretation, which is that uh, except means simply, simply means that the council is, again, acknowledging that the report is done, and a motion to adopt means that the council agrees with the report. This would still state that implementation of any policy recommendation has to be accomplished through separate legislative action. There's also a clause that, um, just to clarify, that the council can then, even after the report is done, can then refer to any other subunits for recommendations. Um, and also that any ad hoc committee that is created to draft a report dissolves when the council takes action on the report that was submitted by the subunit. So hopefully that's clear, but be happy to, uh, to try to answer any questions.
I have a question, Attorney House. Do you have any exam, so I'm, I'm reading the ordinance as it stands now in the last sentence. "The adoption of such recommendations or policies stated shall be accomplished explicitly through legislative action," and understand what you were just saying, but, um, I know we some oftentimes get reports that here is the information that you asked for, and sometimes there's reports with also subsequent action that the council is being asked for. Could, could you provide like an example that maybe this council has seen?
I, I think the, the impetus for this, I think, was the, um, Agricultural Task Force, and I think there was some confusion amongst others by what it meant to adopt that report. Uh, as I'm looking at, I recall that this is a little bit of a compromise because it still requires the actions to be adopted. The only difference now is adopting means the council agrees with the report. Accepting would just simply be what we currently do, which is, uh, that there's no agreement that is implied by accepting or placing on file. So I think in that, in the case of the, the Agricultural Task Force report, there's just some questions about, um, could that be referred after it was submitted for further consideration by standing committees? And what did it actually mean to, I, because I believe that report was actually adopted. And so I think some others felt that that meant, um, that the council was expressing that it, it agreed with the report, um, and, uh, wanted to implement the policies, or at least that the public would perceive it that way.
Thank you, Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Thank you, Chair. So wouldn't you say that we had the same confusion when we adopted the, the body cameras last year? I mean, some of us were confused and we also were explaining that adopt and accept didn't, they mean the same thing. We were not adopting anything. We're just thanking the committee for, for their services and moving on.
Right. Uh, uh, I recall, I mean, in that resolution though, was a little bit specific about what the next steps were. And, and to be honest, personally, I don't know, I'm not sure what is more or less confusing, whether what we have now, to me, what we have now seem fairly clear, but I do understand the point that maybe the public thinks that there is, should be a difference.
And for the part where a motion to accept or place on file does not constitute on and on, and that doesn't mean either that, that, that also if I, if we accept something from a report, um, agree or disagree with it, anybody can just take action within a separate thing like it stated on adopt. So it's not like saying you cannot take action. So again, same thing. And, um, for, um, so you know, I took, I took the, the livery to check all the, um, eight, all the eight agendas from 2023, and we have used the term adopt 524 times versus the term accept that has been used 34 times. And the 34 times that we use that term accept has been used for the NPD reports, the body, the, the body, um, Board of Public Works reports and the arts reports. Like we accepted those reports, and then the other acceptance that we have made are for the dates that we put for council dates in the future and the consent agenda. I mean, it couldn't get any more simpler than that, that those are things that nobody's going to do anything about it. And then I also look at all the other motions that were issued during those, um, throughout the year to just really, like, it would be more significant for me to have clarity on how to use accept, that, you know, some of these other motions that we make, like we have a recommendation to cancel, to confirm, to disallow, to grant, to grant reconditions, to place on fire with or without prejudice, to refer, to accept the merit point assessment, that one I hadn't seen before, but it's on, it's on one of the agendas. So to me, it seems more important to have clarity on the existing motions, so it's clear across the board and make it easy on all the committees that are, that put their hands on, on this part. And then the last question, uh, the, the, the biggest concern with this change is the last statement here, unless directed otherwise by the council and ad hoc subunit, subunit shall dissolve upon the council taking action regarding the report submitted by the subunit. So I understand that the reason for that is because 33.01, Section 3, uses the word should instead of shall. So why can't we just change 33.01 to say shall, which applies to all ad hoc committees, and we don't have to create this duplication of information within the, the ordinances? So to me, again, I, I guess I, I mean, that's a question for you, like, is that possible for that one?
Correct, and I did discuss that option with the, um, with the sponsors. I think that, that, that could be, that is an option. I think they wanted to just include it in the ordinance about solitary reports, so if people were focused on solitary reports, they would see that. And because they had questions about when certain ad hoc subcommittees were supposed to dissolve or not. On the, on the question about, you know, the use of accept and adopt, I, I, part of it may also be just our, our BCC training, because, you know, sometimes adopt is, is used when it doesn't have to do with a report. It's adopting a recommendation, um, and that may be why you see that used more often. It may be something to add to our list when we, when we do our more comprehensive training of BCC staff about when is it appropriate to use adopt rather than approve.
I mean, to me, like, again, if we're going to make this change to be so specific, like on resolutions, should that be accept, which today they are adopt? So I, I, again, I don't feel that this is bringing any clarity. It's going back to the confusion that existed before. And in regards to the ad hoc situation, I mean, either should or shall, which one of the two, but not have the two languages on the, on the box. It doesn't make any sense.
Right. I, I'm, I'm not sure why should was in there. We typically try not to use should when we're drafting ordinances. It's shall or, or may. Well, actually, I should backtrack a little bit. I was at a recent conference where we were talking about ordinance language, and supposedly, I was told in law school, they're teaching now that there are places where you want to use should. It's different from the old days when I was in law school, but.
I mean, to me, it's not like, I get what you're saying. I, I think we had discussed the word shall many times before. So I get your point from the, from the law perspective, but my point in this particular situation is when we're talking about ad hoc committees, we should have one word for it, not in this ordinance is shall and that one should be should or whatever. Like the, those two words do mean something different legally. It's not like accept or, or adopt. Should and shall mean something very different, and we shouldn't create confusion by having them in different places with different labels.
Thank you, Vice Presidents. I'm not seeing any other hands or folks in the queue for questions. I would entertain, or discussion. I would entertain a motion. I see Alder Evers.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm gonna make a motion to place this on file. I don't think we actually need to change the ordinance. I think we're smart enough to be able to understand that adopt does not mean that, we have to implement the recommendations. It's clear, the language is clear. The fact that some orders got confused, even though the city attorney explained it over and over again, is not a fault of the ordinance. So I'm not in favor of changing this, so I'd like to make a motion to place this on file.
I second that.
All right. I'm gonna shake it up and do a roll call vote for this one. Karen, can you take us through?
And in this case, I believe I hold off on asking you unless there's a tie, unless it can impact the outcome of the vote, I believe. Okay. Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Um, yes.
Vice President, Vice President Figueroa Cole is aye. Alder Vitterver?
No.
Alder Vitterver, no. Alder Madison? Alder Madison, aye. Alder Govinder Rajan? Alder Govinder Rajan, aye. Alder Conklin?
Only focus hard in here.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. With six ayes and one no, the motion passes.
Thank you. That passes to place on file. That will move us along to our third agenda item, Legislative File 79101, amending various sections of the Madison General Ordinances to correct inconsistencies and improper references in the MGO constituting a 2023 City Attorney's Revisers Ordinance. And again, I'll turn it over to Attorney House.
Thank you. Um, so for some of the new orders or new members of CCC, a few times a year, we submit a reviser's ordinance. The ordinances currently authorize the city attorney to draft reviser's ordinance without being asked to by an alder. And what these are really technical or grammatical corrections, as much as we try to make sure everything is, uh, correct when we initially draft the ordinances. We have a ordinance revision specialist, and part of her job is literally to go through the ordinances and double-check all the citations, double-check all the grammar, and, and then we catch those and we package them all together a few times a year. So this is our current version. As you can see, sometimes it's correcting the typo. Sometimes an ordinance citation has to be corrected, uh, capitalization, things like that. We never change the substance of any ordinance, uh, but this is a way to clean up the ordinances and get the council's approval so that we can, um, get them corrected through, through Munich Code and on our published ordinances online. So if there's any questions, I can answer them, but there really is no substantive change to any of the ordinances in this draft.
Thank you, Attorney House. We have any questions? Seeing none, any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Sorry, I do have a question real quick. So if we wanted to update that ad hoc thing to say shall instead of should, should have a date, do, is that something that you may, would you use that, would you change the term shall versus should in these changes?
What was the question?
Would you, you use, would you, as part of your updates, would you, would you update without being asked from council to change something from should to shall?
Um, I don't think so, because to me, that's really a substantive change. Yeah, I mean, if this, if 2.27 was being considered for passage, it could, we could also add that change as part of this, because it is really the same subject matter, even though it's a different ordinance section.
Okay. So if we want to change that thing in the future, we just have to come and you draft it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, I will assume unanimous consent. Nope, I need a motion. Uh, I will entertain a motion. Yes, thank you. Alder Conklin recommends to approve the changes.
I'm second.
Seconded by Vice President Figueroa Cole. And unless I see or hear otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. Seeing and hearing none, that item passes unanimously. Moves us along to Agenda Item Number 4, which is Legislative File 72568. Conversation, continued conversation about boards, commissions, and committees other, otherwise known as BCC structure. We do have Deputy Mayor Baumel with us, I know. Who am I turning?
What do you want?
Maybe if I see Deputy Mayor Baumel's camera is on, maybe if we could turn to her just for kind of a recap. It's been a couple meetings since we were last here, um, and then Vice President Figueroa Cole can chime in.
Sure, I'm happy to. I, I put on my camera because I heard my name, so I, I, um, I didn't mean to kick us off, but, um, Alder, Alder Figueroa Cole, do you want to kick us off?
Didn't this, am I, am I back on? Thank you. We didn't discuss that element of that, of the discussion we had earlier, who, who will start this. So, um, as you know, we've been talking about, um, these committees as part of the TFOC's recommendations for quite a few years, how to make, um, processes for, how to improve processes in order to better serve our community and to better use resources. So what we will be presenting today, um, it's, it's a update on how far we have gotten so far on this process. We collected data from each of the committees, um, for all of the committees and determined which committees are under our purview, which is, which is, versus which committees are, are on our purview. And we know that those like transportation parks, Board of Health, things like that, we cannot change. But we still, um, went through all information regarding, regarding the status of quorum, how many meetings are, um, have been provided, how many vacancies we have on each committee, and the number of referrals and recommendations that each committee has done to, has made to the council. So what, that data has been already analyzed and, uh, we have it available on Legistar. So definitely we, we can discuss further into that. But, um, from a high-level perspective, we also discussed the idea of implementing a process that was some kind of, um, some kind of standards that we can, high-level standards that we can apply to each of the, each of the committees. So one of the things that we are looking to do next is to evaluate each committee's tasks or, or duties and evaluate them and determine which of the seven tasks or duties, and evaluate them, and determine which of the seven elements of a great city are the committees impacting or influencing. So we feel that, we know, because this weekend I did some tests on this, on this theory, we know that some committees may have multiple, are related to multiple elements, and we have committees that may have, that are heavy on one element versus the other element. We also have committees that are only serving one single element, for example, housing. There's a lot of committees out there that just serve housing. So we have the Transportation Committee. But we also, I also found committees, randomly, actually, I also found committees that have, that some of the tasks are related to transportation. So I think it's, we think that is a, would be best practice to understand the duties of those committees and to ensure that they are aligned with the city's values and the city's seven elements of a great city. So once we, we are in the process of making, doing that evaluation. So once we have that evaluation completed, we can combine that with the data that we collected about the committees, and then we can determine if there are any redundancies or within the committees, if the committees are, you know, we can, we can evaluate the effectiveness of the committee, and we can evaluate what needs are out there. So that will be kind of our step three in our little process that we are trying to accommodate here. So once we have that information available, the common council and the mayor's office will work together and work with the staff that are managing the committees, and will come back to us with the, with some recommendations on how to proceed from their, from their own. Now, how can we, as alders, support this process? So there's a lot of MGOs out there, there's a lot of work for one person, even for a group of people. So what we, one way to support the process will be for the alders to go and look, look at the MGOs of the committees that they currently serve, or that maybe served in the past, and review the, the committee's duties and responsibilities, and then provide feedback to the council's office. You can send the, Karen will, will establish a form to, to collect the feedback. So we're asking you to provide feedback on, from your perspective, what elements of the great city that committee satisfies. And then also, we would like to know, does the committee is, meets the MGO requirements? Are we, is the committee actually doing what the MGO is asking, is tasked to be, to be done? And do you see any overlapping? Those are kind of super important. Again, there's going to be a few people doing this analysis, and having the input of you as a member on these committees, it's kind of an invaluable piece for this process. You will help us accelerate the, the analysis that we're trying to do. So again, we, we are looking for your input regarding, again, is there's any overlapping, are the requirements being met, is it serving the elements that are needed? And with that, with that information on hand, we expect, we have a timeline that Christie can cover on what we expect for, you know, how to take the process from now until, through the timeline. Thank you.
And just to add a little bit about that timeline, what we're hoping to do is take all of that data we already have, gather it together with, with the additional information that Vice President Figaro Cole just mentioned, talk to more departments, gather more input, and work on synthesizing that into a proposal, potentially to, depending, depending on what we learn and whether we find more than one good option that we think would work. Work on that through the winter, and we are hoping to prevent or share these one or two options with CCEC in their entirety in January. Our hope from there is that we could work with CCEC over the next few months to pick a preference and develop this into an ordinance. One thing I should, to back up a second, when we propose these options, we would also include, you know, this would be structure of meetings, frequency of meetings. If there's more than one option, it would be kind of pros and cons, or where, where, you know, making sure that we're identifying differences between them and what we think the differences functionally generate. We would also do a needs assessment of sorts. So if we said to implement this plan, certain things would need to change, we would identify all of those. So just to give an example, I know we recently had two transportation committees combine. They went through a process of saying, we can't, we, we can't have all of the agenda items from each of those meetings on every meeting. Where should we prioritize our time? So that would be, and they came up with a list of where to prioritize meeting time. So that would be the type of thing you'd identify on a needs assessment of, if we have fewer meetings, we can't double the length of all of them, so we would prioritize what to focus on. And so we would try to be explicit about those things. I just wanted to give one example of what I mean by a needs assessment. It would just be identifying things that might be required to be enacted in order to essentially implement the, the plan. So like I said, we're hoping that we'd be able to get to a point in the spring where we would put a proposed ordinance into, or put a proposal into an ordinance and have that adopted as soon as June. We propose that the effective date wouldn't be immediate. We propose that the effect, that although we, we select a preferred option, get it into an ordinance, and move that through the referral process into adoption, we propose to do that essentially through this winter and into the spring, and ideally have something adopted by June. I know I'm repeating myself, I just want to be clear. But our hope is that we would actually have an effective date when the new alder committee appointments take place anyway, which is every April. So that would give between a summer adoption and through the next winter and into the next spring, to do any of that implementation planning that is needed. If there, if, like, if, if we're combining three committees, we need to identify the membership, if, and the time that it meets. We, if, if we needed to prioritize what the agenda items would focus on, and if that required an amendment of that description in the MGO of that ordinance, it would give us time to do those things. But those would essentially be the implementation steps of a plan that had already been adopted. And then it would go into effect when new alder appointments happen on committees anyway in April of each year. So that is the proposed schedule that we've been talking about. It's, it's, of course, up for discussion, but that's, that's what we have been working towards to date.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sorry, I was having my own conversation up here. I missed a couple of meetings, so I'm not the latest update on that. Do members have questions, points of clarification? I know the last discussion point that we had in CCEC was regarding a chart or listing and compiling and looking at, so this seems to be an alternative. Vice President Figaro Cole?
We de-collected the list, so that was satisfied. The ask was to get the list, and we did the data analysis, and we can provide that to the, you know, like, I know Alder Evers asked for that information, we can provide that in an Excel spreadsheet, that's easier than the PDF file. But I also want to, one of the things that I also want to make very clear, if you are, if there's a, if there's a combination of committees that you are working on, or that you feel that, you know, can be accomplished, that you don't have to, you know, as an alder, you have the right to put a resolution forward to get that going. So we like, we would like for you to follow some of these steps and do the, the work of getting data and the information that we need, but there are already some things on the pipeline that will continue to move along as well as this process.
Thank you, Vice President. A question of clarification, back to what you just said, if I may. So you're saying it's any member of the council's right to submit an ordinance change if they would like to combine or see a combination of committees? But in order to do that, the ask from CCEC and taking on, maybe leading this work or working with leadership, would be to have data completed and that needs assessment before submitting the ordinance?
Yeah, it's just, I don't think it's any different than when someone comes to Attorney Haas and says, can you change this? They have to do a draft analysis, they have to figure out what's happening. But just to, you know, throw things out there without having that done, I think it's not effective. And I think, when, I think at this point in the game, and after so many discussions on, on the TFOCs and discussions with leadership from mayor's office and council, I think we have a pretty, I don't know if the schedule is, if the scale that we discuss is already in Legistar, we can add that too if it's not, but we have a pretty good bonds, I should say, you know, good stepping stones to, to get the process going. So you don't have to start from scratch. You have some guidance already on how to go about it. It's just like when TFOCs make those recommendations and people, as some, you know, at the time, people will be upset that people wanted to move like the Transportation Commission combination. Why are we doing that instead of waiting for a TFOC project? Well, you don't have to wait. You're an alder and you can, if you're going to put the work in, you definitely should be able to do that. And that was done before, you know, we had a process in place.
Wish I would have made it here earlier, because I have a question. And the information that's being compiled currently regarding the evaluation and the seven elements and the needs assessment, that will be back, like, a template will be back before CCEC in January-ish?
I think that's what, that's the plan. And we're asking for help to help us with, to get that moving. And, and also, I want to clarify, those elements, it is super important that we, that we go through all of the committees, not just the ones that we, that we have purview over. Because we need to understand, like, for example, there's some committees we have purview over that had lines that are, that are transportation relevant. So if we were going to, if that committee is in a spot that we feel that can be eliminated or can be combined with something else, that transportation line should move then to the Transportation Commission. So in order for us to effectively move duties around when needed, we need to understand what the, all of the committees do, including the ones that we don't have purview over. So, so just because you are sitting on the board of parks or finance or whatever, things that we cannot touch, we, we should definitely, if you had the time, we appreciate that you reviewed those and then come back to us with, with your suggestions.
I can explain a little bit more to you. Oh, okay, great. All right. So, sorry, let me explain a little bit. So, you know, we have the spreadsheet. I sent out the Excel version again to CCEC. It's also available on Legistar. And the spreadsheet was the, part of that earlier initiative to look at the, or to review the, some data about, you know, number of referrals, number of vacancies. I have our legislative analyst here, if you have specific questions about the spreadsheet, he helped collect some of that data. One of the things that became clear as we were all having these kind of thinking sessions is that we need to do not only looking at individual committees and how they might combine or be, be reformulated, but we need to think about what kind of a larger structural framework that we're going to try to work with this, because there are so many committees, that it, it became pretty clear that we're going to have to do things on multiple levels. So this effort that Vice President Figaro Cole just described is an effort to provide us, okay, so the seven elements of a great city, something that the budget process is going to be using quite a bit, and you're going to be seeing it, if you haven't already, you'll start to see it more and more, as a, as an organizing principle for a lot of things in the city, provides us with, with sort of a framework for looking at what, sorry, evaluating the status quo, right? What do we have right now? And what types of themes are we, are we, do we have a lot of committees on, so on and so forth? Helps us center ourselves and also maybe give us some visual representation. You know, it, it will help us, I think, I think sometimes it's overwhelming because there are so many committees. It's like, where do you start? What are we doing? Is it just chipping away, or are we doing this systematically, right? Like, those are some of the questions that folks are asking. So what we're hoping to do is, using the seven elements as, as a framework, we can start sorting the committees, and then, and like Vice President Figaro Cole said, as she was going through this exercise for herself, she realized, we need to sort all the committees, not just the ones that are MGO. So your spreadsheet has the MGO committees with all that data, but we're going to ask you all to just weigh in with all your committees. And, and then, from there, we can start to do more analysis of logical places for things to be maybe combined, maybe reassessed. Deputy Mayor Baumel has a really great way also of talking about possible, you know, interrogating the question of, you know, are there other ways we can be doing the work? And this will come up over, over time. I think what we, what we want to do right now is kind of get the committees put into the framework, and that's where we can use your help. I'll send out something for you to be able to put in that information for your committees and for everyone on the council. It would be great if, if everyone could weigh in on that. And then I'm hoping that then we'll be able to, you know, use that as a, as a, as the next step and kind of generate that. And, and over time, we'll be able to get, get us down to a couple proposals for you all to evaluate, so that with the timeline that I, that I sent out, the draft timeline from, that we worked on, proposes that we have some actionable item before this, this term of this CCEC is, is over, so that you all have, have something that you can then send to the council, so that you'll feel like you, you know, are able to, what am I trying to say? Like, it's a substantive, kind of deliverable, I guess, from this project. So I'm happy to explain more, but that's kind of the thinking right now, and I think I'll create the form, I'll send it out to you all. It'll probably become a little bit clearer, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for the explanation. One more clarifying question that I have, I don't see anyone else in the queue.
Jayle, I have my hand raised.
Alder Bennett?
It's okay, you can ask your question first.
Go for it, I didn't see you in the queue, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I, I was just like, wow, I'm really chopped liver. No, it's okay. But I was hoping, can you tell us more about the, like, the ask from alders to share information about our BCCs? Like, will you have some sort of form that we can fill out about it? Like, just like kind of guiding questions about what information you need and would be helpful? And like, who do we send that to? When are you hoping to have that by?
That question is for our Chief of Staff, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I am hoping to get that turned around soon here, so that I can, you know, you all can have a few weeks to work on it. I'm going to ask, I'm also, of course, there's going to be some open-ended space there too, right? So that if anything I didn't think of you wanted to share, you can. But I'm, I'm going to ask about what elements each of your committees' tasks align with, in your opinion. I'm going to ask if you see any overlap among your committees. One benefit to having alders weigh in on this is that y'all are on many committees. You know, you're not just members of one. So it's a really helpful perspective across committees. So I'll want to know a bit about whether you feel like any of your committees overlap with each other. You know, I'd also like to know if you feel like any, if you're, if you feel like your committees, MGOs, and daily work are aligned. You may find, for example, after you read the ordinance about your committee, upon reflection, that perhaps the committee's been taking up activities very closely aligned to what's in there, or maybe something very different. And so I'd, I'd also like information about that, to see from your perspective, how things are going over there. If there's anything else anybody wants me to specifically ask about, in addition to opening, you know, giving open space as well for you to reflect on your opening, you know, giving open space as well for you to reflect on your committees, I'm open to, to suggestions, absolutely. And I'm going to, I'm going to try to get this turned around soon, like when, I, I hate to say in the next week because it's already Tuesday, but, you know, I mean, like, that kind of timeline, like mid-September so that you have two, three so weeks to fill it out. But I want, you know, while I'm working on this, you can be, you can be thinking about it as you visit your committees, you know, as you attend, I mean, as you attend your committees and think about, oh, you know, that's interesting, here's what the seven elements are, here's what my committee does, you know? You can do a little thinking about that as I'm generating this as well.
Okay, sweet. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Alder Bennett. Thank you for the explanation. I guess mine was that we're here in front of CCEC right now, but obviously the communications will be sent to all alders or just CCEC at this time?
I, I, my preference, and I'm open to whatever the will of this body is, I was thinking it would be nice to send the communication with an explanation and the form survey, however we're going to collect the information, to all alders and ask anyone who, any of the alders to do that reflection on the committees that they serve on, give them the opportunity to weigh in. I'm open, but that, that was my thinking.
Thank you. The reason I ask is because when we first started this conversation, kind of the same acknowledgement that Vice President Figueroa Cole had made of, it's not, it, it's pretty labor-intensive work, kind of following along with the proposal of identifying the seven elements and then looking at MGO, obviously it takes time and capacity. And so I just remember the reminder of, it's, it's not necessarily work that can be done just within committee, but extending that out. And I think because obviously all of the members aren't a part of CCEC, sharing that information as well would be my preference as well. Any comments, thoughts about that from the body? And then just a clarifying point that the council office is then working with the Mayor's Office and/or Deputy Mayor Baumell on this. All right. Any other questions or points of discussion? Vice President Figueroa Cole.
I just wonder, what is the, what is the ask for this particular resolution? Is this, is this in committee or does this gets moved somewhere else? Is this, is this a special motion or no motion at all? Is this an informational item or would we need a motion to accept it, to move forward?
Oh, you're talking about the item that's before us on our agenda.
Yeah.
It's a discussion item.
Discussion, so there's nothing to be, okay, perfect, thank you.
Correct. All right. Looking at the time and not seeing any hands in chambers or online, I'll move that along and encourage everyone to keep their eyes open for that communication from Karen. That moves us into Agenda Item Number Five, Legislative File Number 75427, Council Office Updates. I will turn it back over to our Chief of Staff.
Thank you. I will share my screen. You also have a copy on your desks, those of you who are in the room with me and those, the rest of you have also received this on your email. Speaking of surveys, thank you all who have had a chance to respond to the survey I sent out regarding some training opportunities this winter. I really appreciate that. And if you haven't had a chance yet to respond, if you could do so tonight, that would be great because then I can start making further plans and reaching out to the people who said they were interested in each different opportunity. So thank you. Got some staff out of office information. And I have a note here I want to, for workplace, workplace safety, if any of the alders receive any concerning emails, calls, or interactions in the course of carrying out your duties, your alder duties, just please contact me if you would to schedule a debrief appointment and we can go from there. I am calling your attention, is it not sharing? Oh, all right. One moment. Hmm. Okay. Okay, great. I'd also like to call your attention to a few recent staff communications that I think are probably of, of quite wide interest to alders. DPCED Director Matt Walker sent out a memo to all alders describing the work the city is doing on housing, very important information. There was information from Metro Transit about public hearings in September on proposed December route changes, which I know are of interest to many. The Homeless Issues Consortium sent out a survey for updates to their community plan. And our own Liz Windsor will be sending out a number of communications about the balance on your alder expense accounts and some reminders about deadlines for reimbursement as well as public records reminder. And of course, I have a, carrying on with my tradition of advice and recommendations budget season, especially for the new folks, but really for everyone, if you're at all able, please attend the Finance Committee Capital Budget Briefings on 9/12 at 4:30. It really helps to, even if you're not on finance, to be able to get some initial introduction to each of the agency's capital budgets and so that when it does come to you, you will have had a chance to, to dig in a bit more. Also, check your emails, your inbox for emails from Christine Coe. Big one came today with lots of resources and lots of links. And she will also send some out, I believe, after some of the, as we go along after the finance meetings with like links to the recording and additional information. And I really strongly recommend that alders really focus on those. Of course, I have another reminder that we do have a mini budget overview videos to watch as part of New Alder Orientation website. And just a reminder for deadline for resolutions, the longer that we have, if we have a little bit of, of lead time to get resolutions ready, it really does help because there are, sometimes we need to communicate with members of the public and different, different staff, different alders and so on and so forth. So we appreciate that. And then, and then I just have more recommended trainings. And I, I got a, I did get a little feedback from one alder who attended the Trauma Informed Living Training and they said that the presentation helped me build on the inner work that I've been doing and gave me new tools. The material was provided in an approachable manner and felt safe to learn. If you do take an organizational development training, I would love to hear your feedback, especially if you think it's something that other alders would, would enjoy, would, would benefit from, would gain from. And I will, I will definitely highlight those. And then I'm highlighting some upcoming trainings. There's a Civilian Response Act or shoot events that MPD is providing, and this is at the MPD Training Center and it's open to alders as well as city staff. So though, some of you I know have been interested in that and I'll have more communications about those types of things as well. And then also I just highlight, it's been on here for a while, I'm going to still highlight giving and receiving feedback, part one. It's, it's, I found it to be quite useful and I think that it's helpful when we're thinking about giving feedback even within the context of, of your roles as well. So hopefully there might be something there for you and, and a link. So I'll continue to give you, you know, highlight some things that I think might be helpful, broad interest. And, and if you could let me know as you take, take trainings, I would love to know how they're, how they're going. So that is the update in a nutshell.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? That was very descriptive, I wouldn't imagine there would be. All right. Seeing and hearing none. Thank Karen for her time on that. Oh, something just happened. I do see Alder Evers in the queue, go ahead, please.
Move to adjourn.
Oh. Sorry, we have one more agenda item. I will assume that means no more discussion or questions on the Chief of Staff report and move us along to Agenda Item Six, which is Legislative File 78125, Future Agenda Items. So just to give you all an update, the next time we meet will be in two weeks. So far, the increased alder payer conversation about that is on, planned to be on the agenda for the 19th. A couple other outstanding points of interest or topics of interest that the alders and/or CCEC members brought up were the social, Alder Social Media Pilot, we are pushing that to October. Inviting the Performance Excellence Coordinator, I believe that was a ask of Alder Wihili. Progress update on hybrid BCC meeting possibilities, I believe that came from CCEC. And inviting Department of Civil Rights to present on the RESJ analysis process. Are there any additional topics that alders would like to see added to this list or currently listed items that we would like to see prioritized for the September 19th agenda? Alder Evers?
No, I'm sorry, my hand is up, come back for me.
Apologies, you are ready. Not seeing or hearing, so I would just ask that if there are thoughts or as we have continued discussions tonight, for instance, or leading up into the 19th, that you would let myself and/or Karen know about prioritization of topics or new topics to add. But definitely we will discuss increased alder pay at our next CCEC meeting. Not to belabor us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Alder Evers?
Adjourn.
Seconded by Vice Figueroa Cole, Vice President Figueroa Cole, that is a long title, unless I see or hear, otherwise I'll assume unanimous consent and I adjourned.